Okay.
Well, other than, sorry Gordon, other than the obvious that we're recording this, it will go up on, I'm not sure if it's going to get into the area 58, I think it's going to get into the area 58 YouTube. I don't know that it's going to be on cable access, but we are recording this.
Okay.
Sorry Gordon.
Okay, um, are we doing the pledge of allegiance? Or are we skipping that?
We can. You got a flag there?
Oh, I have one in my bathroom, you want me to grab it?
Hold on, hold on a second, hold on a second, hold on.
Okay.
I pledge allegiance.
Okay.
To the flag. The United States of America. And to the republic.
Which is the same.
One nation, under God. Under God. Divisible, with liberty and justice. For all.
Alright, good job.
Okay, regular session minutes?
Okay, so I move the approval of the agenda for the April 14th meeting?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, um, selectmen's minutes, regular session, March 24th, 2020, I move those?
I'll second those. I'll move the executive. Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Executive session, February 25th, 2020, and hold.
You want to do the next one too, Gordon?
Sure, executive session first, March 10th, 2020, and to approve them and to hold them.
Approve and hold.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'll do the executive session, second session from March 10th, 2020. Gordon, you weren't there, so it was just Tom and I.
I'll second. I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Payroll warrant number 85, for $363,358.06. I'll move that, Tom.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Gordon, it's on you.
Okay. Venda warrant number 86, for $48,034.30.
You're going to do them one at a time?
I can do them all. Venda, uh, sorry, withholding warrant number 87, for $133,309.78. Venda warrant number 88, for $45,337.40. School warrant number 89, for $384,529.34. Ambulance commitment from March 23rd, 2020, to March 29th, 2020, for $43,047.21. Ambulance commitment from March 30th, 2020, to April 5th, 2020, for $53,215.80. Mobile home park fee number four, for $5,160.
Second? Second.
All in favor? Right.
Aye. I move to approve, uh, I'm sorry, I move to affirm the approval of the following bills. Halifax Fire Department reimbursement to wages and vehicle maintenance accounts incurred from aircraft accident for $7,164.17. Attorney Lawrence Mayo. Legal March for $3,456.25. Michael C. Gilman Esquire Legal, February, $1,540.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Do you want me to move the next one?
Uh, you want to move it, Tom?
Sure. I move to affirm approval of the following bill, KP Law PC, for $3,055.60.
I'll second that, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I moved to approve the following warrants, payroll warrant number 90, for $361,642.60. Venda warrant number 91, for $209,402.96. Withholding warrant number 92, for $133,176.61.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
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 I moved, I moved to approve payment of the following selectmen's bills dated April 4th, 2020. CNA Surety Direct Bill for $100. RELX Inc. Law Books for $70.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I move to approve the payment of the following bill, Brooks and Durances, Andrews, Sabre and Cove at Town Meeting Federal Legislation for $1,420.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm staying.
It's on you, Charlie.
Okay, um, first we have three road openings, the first is to affirm the road opening for Southern Ocean Avenue. There, in each of these cases, there was a police detail and stipulations from the highway surveyor. That are the same for each of these road openings. The board had already previously approved the road opening for Southern Ocean Avenue, but needs to affirm that.
All moved?
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And there's a road opening for 344 South Street, again, same police detail and stipulations from the highway surveyor.
All moved?
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Then 383 Monpont Street, again, police detail and stipulations from the highway surveyor.
All moved?
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And we'll have the board sign the second and third ones later this week as the board comes into town hall. And we'll make sure of that. COVID updates, um, back in March, the board had, when we were still dealing with the beginning of the emergency, the board had said that it wanted to institute, essence, what I'm calling Halifax COVID leave, simply to differentiate that from the new federal statutes about COVID leave. In essence, we were trying to avoid a situation where people weren't going to get paid, either because of COVID or because they didn't have a work site in essence to come to. We had them set up to work from home, NIT. It's been, we're now in our fifth week in essence since that. And I'm going to ask the board, not tonight, but on the 28th of April, at the next selectmen's meeting, to revisit that policy in that we've now, I think, been able to establish for most of the non-public works, non-public safety personnel, the ability to work from home if possible. And we need to, in essence, differentiate if people are taking regular vacation leave, or personal leave, or bereavement leave, or sick leave, for instance, for sickness other than COVID, to differentiate that from what we've been doing. But also, there may be a few circumstances where we have employees who cannot work from home, but neither have a job site to go to. You know, because some of the work has to be done on the job site, but we've closed the job sites. What I'm going to do is review with the departments to make sure if we have a list of those people and work out what possible remedies we might be able to do. There may be other work for them to do for the town that doesn't involve going to that particular job site. And then have the board establish how we're going to handle leave or of any type for them. I'm going to, a little bit later, I'll talk about the federal COVID leave. There may be cases for those employees where federal COVID leave covers their situation. But I don't need a decision from the board tonight about this, but I wanted to put the board on notice. I'll bring it back to the board on the 28th, since, in essence, I want to say we're normal, but in a sense, we've gotten a little bit routine established for our COVID situation that is probably going to be lasting in one form or another, at least for a few more months. I didn't know if the board had any thoughts about that at this point.
Well, it sounds like we'd be better off waiting to see what happens later on.
The situation is still fluid, it's hard to, hard to pick. Well, if the board will think about this for the next couple of weeks, because, you know, for instance, if we have someone going on vacation, they're not going to be on COVID leave, they're going to just be on vacation leave. And we have to have a way of differentiating between the two. On the food pantries, yeah, yeah, sorry, on the food pantries, just to update, our Lake of the Lake is not going to be accepting further donations from Cisco. It just was not a good match in terms of their capability to accept the larger sizes of goods that Cisco is able to provide. As far as I know, the Halifax Congregational Church food pantry went okay today. I didn't, I haven't heard from Heidi or from Steve Hayward about any difficulties. I'll check in with them tomorrow morning to make sure we're going to be able to continue with Cisco. But that's where things stand right now with Cisco and the food pantries. On the federal COVID leave, that's going to go into effect at the end of this week. There were sort of two sections to it, two main sections to it. One is, there was a provision for paid sick leave. It didn't matter whether your employer had sick leave available, paid sick leave available or not. All employees, under most circumstances for employers under 500, which includes Halifax, were automatically given a sort of sick leave of two weeks in essence available to them if they were dealing with sickness due to COVID. The second area is that there may be employees who cannot return to work, sorry, go ahead. There are sick, there are employees who can't return to work because they have childcare duties. Obviously, if schools closed, with daycare facilities closed, there are parents who have to stay at home with their children. And what this sort of emergency family and medical leave gave is an opportunity for employees to be able to do that. That's going to go into effect at the end of the week. We'll make sure through Linda Cole and everybody else to make sure that all of our employees are aware that the federal law is now going to be in effect and what their rights are under those circumstances. And then also, we'll have to work out forms and applications to ensure there's documentation when they do take those types of leave.
It's 7:45, we have a continuation hearing?
Yep, I'll get Joey on the mic here.
I have to remove him?
Joey, in a minute, I'll get, I'm trying to unmute you here. There we go, there. So Joe Peck is on the mic, he has a mic now. So, um, just to refresh, the board was waiting for a report from land planning, which it has received, and I'm hoping that you have copies of. Pam did send, I believe, a copy of it to Joe, so at least he has that to refer to. I don't, I don't know where the board wants to go from here at this point. Or Joe may want to say something to the board at this point, I mean.
I don't. Tom?
Yeah, I'm just reviewing some of the information here. My recollection is we had discussed getting a base plan so that we had something to refer to, and I think that's what the report from the engineer kind of highlights a little bit. It may also be a little extensive, but I honestly haven't had a whole lot of time to process this.
Gordon?
Yeah, I'm just reading through the recommend, he gave three recommendations.
Charlie?
Yeah, yes Troy.
You've had more of an opportunity to go through it, I hope.
Well, I went through, yeah, I mean, I have it before me. We'll go over what Gordon just mentioned in terms of the recommendations. The recommendations included, or let's say the comments recommendations, one, there appears to be some questions about the intention of the remaining soil piles on the property in that the amount of earth removed, you know, from the property may not be the same as the amount of earth removed from the pond itself. And what he said was based on the submittal documents, excavation of soil was for the purpose of increasing the depth of the agricultural pond, and some of the excavated soils were removed from the site for use as fill for construction of the abutting building lots. Since construction of the building lots is complete, the applicant should tell the board what he intends to do with the remaining soil piles. The board may desire to have the applicant level out the remaining soil piles to ensure that no unnecessary soil is removed from the site. You might want to have Joe speak to that at this point. Also, it's probably easier to do these one at a time.
What's your intentions, Joe?
I have no intentions, it's not getting removed from the site. So, I mean, I honestly have no intentions, whether they're just piles of dirt right now. Like, I'm honestly, I'm not doing anything with them. I have no intention, I don't want to just spread them out, just prove that I'm not going to take it off the property, because I'm not taking it off the property. That's where it's staying. At some point it gets spread out, I just, I mean, I have so many things I'm doing right now besides spreading a giant pile of dirt, but it's certainly not leaving the property, which I guess is the main concern.
Joe, is any of this material, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt.
No, that's alright.
Is any of this material useful in the board?
No.
Is it, it's not that type of material?
It's like a mixture of clay and sand.
Alright.
I mean, at some point, you know, I'm bound to have children soon, they want to go play in the dirt pile, it's probably just going to get spread out where it is. It's really a useless soil, it's just not good sand, it's not loom, it's just, all they do is make the pond deeper, it's just piled up there.
Okay. I didn't know if it was in conjunction with the construction or not, that just.
What's the board feeling? Hello?
Hi.
They're thinking, still reading some of this.
I smell the smoke from here.
Well, hopefully it's only smoke. So Troy, you mentioned a minute ago that you didn't, you weren't planning on, you know, spreading it out, but just then, a half minute ago, you said, well, you know, I probably would spread it out.
I probably would, but I mean, that's something that is so far down on my list, like, I mean, to me, it's just piles of dirt. I mean, by the time I get caught up with everything that I need to be doing, it's going to be five or six years before I even think about spreading dirt in the field out back, that I, you know, it's, it's in an area that's not used, it's, I have, I mean, they're literally just piles of dirt. I don't know what the, if there's some sort of rule against having dirt piled up on your property. But it's really not leaving the property, it seemed like he said, you know, spread it out so we know I'm not going to take it out of there. All I can do is say I'm not going to take it out of there, and I'm certainly not going to. My father's certainly not capable of even calling a truck at this point to come and take it out of there if he wanted to, with the way his health is, so it's. But I can assure you guys.
Gordon?
Not leaving my yard.
But I still think the plan needs to be better, that's the only issue I have.
And that's the second section.
What do you think is missing?
It's recommending that an as-built topographical plan be required to be submitted.
So. That's condition three, right? Right, that's condition three, and also condition two even, that the submitted plans should be prepared by a registered land surveyor or professional engineer. The plan submitted has no stamp or signature of a registered land surveyor or professional engineer. We recommend the applicant provide an appropriately stamped plan. We also recommend the applicant's engineer provide property lines, zoning lines, and designations of assessors parcels on the map. Here's that the excavation area is located on map 79 lot 1D, rather than map 79 lot 10, is within a conservancy zone rather than a residential zone as indicated on the submittal plan. We'll get to the as-built in a minute, and Gordon's correct, there's, that's another, the third recommendation there. But in terms of the second recommendation, Joe, what are your thoughts on that?
What was the second recommendation?
Okay, so the plan itself that was submitted to the board, showing, for instance, where the pond is and where the piles of dirt are right now. There's no stamp or signature of a registered land surveyor or professional engineer on the plan. So our engineer from land planning recommends an appropriately stamped plan. And also in addition, provide the property lines, the zoning lines, and designations of the assessors parcels on the plan. He said that it appears the excavation area is located on map 79 lot 1D, rather than map 79 lot 10. It's within a conservancy zone rather than a residential zone as indicated on the submittal plan.
So this is all to get done, to get a permit, retroactive, going back, what, a year and a half, is that? So if I do all of these recommendations, and then the board votes to give a permit, that's basically what this is for. If I don't get the permit, I don't, I mean, was the dirt certainly not going back? Is that, just trying to see what, what happens either way? Because it just seems silly to spend all of this money and waste resources when there's a lot bigger things going on, I think, in most people's lives than dirt that was removed a year and a half ago. I mean, is the penalty that my father gets charged with a crime? It's like, because I, I mean, there were, there were cases from going to get, taking a court on criminal charges, which he can't drive, he certainly can't appear in court. If he went in there, he'd probably be hallucinating in the courtroom, and the judge would probably get rid of it. So, I mean, we're going to spend all this money and waste resources and time for stuff that was taken away in 2018, when we're just trying to get a permit, and I can pay it, and we can be done with it. It just seems silly to keep paying people, and I know, and I had nothing to do with it, and maybe permit should have been pulled? But the person who, his name is on the summons to go to court, is someone who has dementia so bad that he's actually seeing trucks going in and out of the yard right now. So if it goes to court, it's certainly not going anywhere. So I think the easiest thing to do is just to issue a permit for the amount of dirt that was taken out of there a year and a half ago. So we stop really wasting the town's time and money, and my time and money, when I'm just trying to fix someone else's mistake, when, you know, this whole thing probably started because there was bad blood between two people that weren't me and weren't my father. And I'm just trying to get this thing done and taken care of, because, I mean, if it does go on long enough, my father's probably not even going to live to see the court date, to be honest with you. And I'm really just trying to help the town, so you guys can move beyond this as well as myself.
Tom?
Yeah, this is really hard, I empathize and I hear everything you're saying, Joe.
I know, but it's not me, because I don't, I'm not going to get in trouble, that lands on a mine.
No, no, I understand.
He's going to be dead, or he's going to be in a home.
I, I, I hear everything you're saying.
Take the money for the permit and let the town have the money, instead of we're going to give it to a surveyor so he can go and draw it up, and then they have it and say that, great, we give a permit for something a year and a half ago? It's just, I don't see the point of wasting the time and the resources to, you know, it's not like if you deny the permit, we're going to go to wherever the two people took the dirt to and bring it back and put it in the pond. So it's either, you know, we, I guess basically it's either the town issues a permit and we pay it, and whatever late fees would be on it at this point, or you tell us we don't get a permit, and my father has to appear in court, which he can't do. And I'm not making this up, if you'd like me to put him on the phone, I, I, I will. I literally just called him over from the hospital like three hours ago, I mean, it's really, we don't get the permit, it's not going to go anywhere.
I hear everything you're saying, Joseph, and right now, I got to ask the board whether they want to vote to follow the recommendations of our engineer, or what?
Okay.
This is like so difficult, in this particular situation, in this, in this particular time. In my mind, in a perfect world, I'd like to see two and three taken care of. Whether that's feasible, and to Joe's point, you know, maybe moot anyway, I, it's, it's hard for me to just say, okay, forget about it.
Because I've heard Mom said nothing like that is ever going to get done again. I mean, I think everybody in the town knows that I really do want to follow all of the town rules. Every board that I work with knows that, I never say no, and I feel like that's never going to happen. And the person who did make it happen isn't even capable of doing so anymore. I mean, I guess the town can believe me that I have good intentions, or they cannot.
No, no, nobody's maligning your intentions, Joe, and I appreciate your frustration and your emotions at this time, especially involving your dad. I've known for 40 years myself, and, you know, I'm fond of, it's just hard in this position to pick and choose who are you going to, you know, not make, do something. The other option is to just, no, it's not a great option, is to just wait and, uh, I, I don't know, I'm really at a loss.
Well, if you wait, you probably won't have anyone to try to get the permit from, to be honest with you.
I think that's where I was going, Joe.
Yeah, it's, so, I mean, I'm just, if we don't do it now, it's probably never going to happen, because he's not, I don't want to speak doom and gloom, but he's not appearing anywhere. He's certainly not filling any paperwork out, he's certainly not getting a courthouse.
Gordon, Tom?
I'd like to see them, two and three get done. I don't have to put a time limit on right now, but I do think they need to be done.
Alright, well, I mean, I have a lot of things that I'm dealing with right now. I'm just going to put it back.
A year, Joe?
Yep, I'm here, can you hear me?
If we gave you a year?
Well, it, I mean, it all depends. If the person you're trying to get, whose name was on the summons to go to court and being charged with criminal charges, is not around anymore.
Charlie?
Yep.
Were we charging criminal charges?
Yes, yes, no, it said criminal charges, it appeared in criminal court. It said you appear in criminal court. But regardless of what it was to appear in court, that, by the time it goes to court, that person's not going to be here. And even in a year, that person's not going to be here. And I don't believe that an outstanding fine gets passed down to somebody's children. And I'm really trying to pay this now, because if I ignore this now, it's, this is going to be the end of it, because the person that you're trying to get to appear in court and pay this permit and the fine is not going to be here. And if it's, and it's a year from now, I'm not going to do it in a year from now. I'm not going to take care of something that a deceased person did wrong. And I don't believe that it becomes my problem. And I also think there's more people that could use my money than a land surveyor right now. There's a lot of people that need help, who I've tremendously been trying to help. And a land surveyor is certainly not the best use of money right now. Also, we can get a piece of paper on our file that says dirt was taken out a year and a half ago, which can't go back. I just, I don't see another alternative besides me paying the permit right now. There really is no other alternative. So you wait for the courts to open, and we send a man in who, if he is alive, has full-blown dementia. You're asking me to spend money on something when all I'm trying to do is make this thing right, that was a year and a half old. And I'm doing it because I respect everybody in the town, which I would like to have good relationships going forward, even though some of the sins that we're talking about are not mine, I'm just trying to fix them.
Tom?
Yeah, like I said, Troy, this is so difficult, I can only think of, you know.
It's very difficult.
Yeah, I hear what Joe's saying, and to his point, if, if John's not any longer with us, it's not going to go anywhere anyway.
I guess my, my point is, what does it? I guess my, my point is, what does the town gain out of it? If there's a lesson to be learned, we've learned it and hopefully other people coming before us have learned it too. What, 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 what else do we have to prove?
Like I said, in a perfect world, two and three would be where I'd wanna go. I don't think this is a perfect world by any stretch.
I think it's pretty far from it at this point.
Yeah, exactly, on, on, and multiple levels. I, I, I'm inclined to say, let's deal with the permit and if anything else goes on in the lot or the property, that this is gonna have to be established.
Well, I certainly never do anything on the property. Obviously, I'm caring for it now that if anything would ever require a permit, I would always get it. I, I, that's, I can promise you that. I've been living here my whole life. Unfortunately, I'm probably gonna be living here the rest of my life and not going very far away. I, I only wanna be in the good graces with everybody in the town. I, I, I don't wanna be doing things without permits to, to ruffle any feathers. I, I'm just not like that.
Refresh me, Joe, the property's still in your dad's name or his trust or what have you?
Yeah.
Okay. I don't know, what's everybody else's feelings here?
My feelings are right now i- is, is that we set out to be sure that everybody follows the rules and the regs that we have on writing on bylaws. Unfortunately, the circumstances we have here at the beginning of this have changed radically.
Well, I guess the one issue I have is what you guys brought up when I came on to the board was this was an ongoing thing that was going on for at least a year before I joined the board. And that's no fault of Joey and Joey, I don't, I understand you, what you're saying.
But I don't get your, it's the person who did it for a year and it was an ongoing thing and they were doing something wrong habitually, that person's not capable of doing it anymore. And when we say that if becomes the time they're no longer with us, I mean, you could say right now, the person who was doing that is no longer with us. So this, I don't, I just don't get who would, you're gonna try to make sure everybody follows the rule. He can't follow the rules anymore and he can't break the rules anymore. So I mean, I think like Mr. Garrett said, a point has been proved. I mean, I certainly don't wanna do anything wrong in my yard and have to go through this in the future. So if she wanted to teach a son a lesson, I certainly learned from it. But no one else is gonna learn anything or nothing else is gonna be proved going forward except a man with dementia had to be wheeled into a courthouse to have a judge tell him he can't even speak for himself. That's after this, you know, pandemic subsides, you know, we'll, that, that's what the courts will be clogged up with.
All right, Tom, Jordan, you guys ready to vote on whether or not we should follow all the recommendations or give the permit?
You wanna make a motion for just issuing the permit? I, I can't see the point of dragging John into court at this point and it has nothing to do with, because it's John, it's because of the circumstances. I, I, I move we issue the permit and, uh, and, and let's put this thing away. I, I can't even imagine getting a court date in the next year based on the way things are going now anyway. I mean, the whole reason is unfortunate, we tried to give everybody an opportunity and it just didn't work. So that, that's where I'm at.
And I hope that you guys can tell from this that I am certainly willing to always work with the town going forward. I, I am gonna be here a long time longer than.
Gordon?
That came from it.
I understand what Joey's saying, I understand what Tom's saying. I, I think if there's any more trucks that come out with materials, then it would change my vote tonight if there's anything else that comes out.
I certainly, well, I mean, if anything else comes out, you're just, you're so, I mean, I, I hate to put things so bluntly, but if I'm lying, then it would change your vote tonight. I get that. I, I don't like being lied to either. I know it's almost the same as being accused of lying going forward, so I said that's not gonna happen.
Well, Jo- Joey, the only reason why I say that is because when we had the meeting the last time and then there was a message about getting more material out of there too.
And I didn't do it. Cause I worked through how it worked and, and I, and I followed, like, I can take more material out of there, I just need to get a permit. And I, before I even took one truckload out of there, I went down to the town hall, asked what I needed to do and how it worked. So it's not like I snuck them out of there. I, I lived up to my word, which is what I plan on doing. You know, if you think I'm not going to love my word and you think I'm lying, then maybe you shouldn't give me a permit, but that's not what's happening here.
Joe, Gordon?
Yep.
Would we if we put a caveat on it that we sent a letter to Joe or trusted, with the trust or whatever it is, saying that if any violation of this permitted in the future, this is, then we'll take more legal actions?
Okay.
So Tom, are you, you, you moving it?
Yes.
Gordon?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Cheers. Good luck, Joseph.
So, so will someone send me, I don't even know what I'm, I, someone send me what I have to pay or what I need to fill out. And I didn't, I didn't mean to sound abrasive, I, I hope I did it, I just, dealing with my dad is in this sort of part of it and I just trying to do the right thing.
Joe, Pam and I will put something together and send it to you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Seelig. I hope everybody stays safe.
You too, Joe.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so the board just, we've already passed our eight o'clock, so what I'm gonna be doing is, Joe, I've taken off the mic and Bob Bergstrom, I'm gonna unmute now. So he's, his mic is live. Bob, hi.
Hey, Bob.
No singing, Bob.
I was gonna, like, I'm just sitting around in my pajamas, like, they can't see me, right?
More information I need to know.
I hope you guys are doing good, that's all.
So you're, you're requesting the Mud Fest?
Correct.
The way things are going right now, if, if the governor doesn't lift or the president doesn't lift a ten minimum people gathering, you'd have to say, you know, I'd have to say no based on that at this point.
Yes, oh, I understand that a hundred percent. My thing is, is if we have the permit and we are allowed to go forward with the numbers that we usually run, then we'd still be all set. So I'm feeling if I'm issued a permit and the laws are still set in place for the minimum of like ten to thirty people, then I would not go forward with it.
It's, it's pretty much not ten to thirty, it's just ten, right?
It's just ten, something like that, yeah, yeah.
Bob, how many people attended the last Mud Fest?
We're just under a thousand.
Okay, so the governor may slowly increase the size for gatherings and you, as I believe what happened in March, if I remember correctly, he lowered the numbers. I think at one point it was two fifty, then it was fifty, twenty-five, ten, something like that. And we've been stuck at ten basically for several weeks now. I don't, you know, obviously I can't read his mind and he doesn't even know how fast he'll be able to reopen the state, but it may very well be that we're gonna move it, you know, in the opposite direction since starting at ten, moving up to twenty-five, et cetera. Obviously, if we're talking a thousand people, he's, you know, there's not any limit for any size gathering. I mean, the Red Sox could go off and play Fenway Park at that point. So the board can vote this contingent upon the restrictions being lifted by the governor.
Absolutely, that's what I'm telling you.
Exactly. That was my wording, exactly, yes.
Well, we have to.
Let it be known, we don't have a thousand people standing at once in there. It rotates, but our numbers would still be higher, you know.
Wouldn't we have to plan a date sometime just prior to it to just affirm or revoke or?
I'm willing to do that, yeah. If we pay attention to what's going on, I'm, I'm with that.
Well, the, the nearest date in terms of regular meeting schedule would be June eighth.
Okay.
Now that gives us some time to assess where we're going, if, if we're going anywhere goes.
It, it, it seems that, that the next month or so is gonna be critical as to what, what decisions would be made by the governor or the president or whoever, as far as opening up the country again or closing it down, so. And that's iffy.
Yes, and I, I would, I wouldn't wanna go forward with it if Mike wasn't capable to reach those, my capacity numbers anyhow, you know, wouldn't be worth it.
Bob?
Due to insurance reasons and such.
Is there a deadline that you have to have all your vendors lined up for?
I have a, have to have them thirty day notice and, um, I believe they all could be withdrawn if possible with, I don't know, would they take losses or reimbursements or nothing like that, I don't know.
Well, you can always work that out, Bob. You're gonna have to write it in your agreements that you've got your bailout clause.
Correct.
It's, it's a perfect example.
What's the board's wishes?
I, I don't have a problem with giving them a date subject to being, you know, reviewed just prior, you know, as long as Bob can live with that. I, I personally, I don't, I don't see it happening, but, you know, there's no point in being totally pessimistic about everything, which is my view.
I'm, I'm, I'm with you the same. I heard there was other cancellations and such with similar dates, so that wouldn't be, like, no, I'm not horrified in any way. Just doing what I do.
You wouldn't wanna push it out?
You're willing to sec, you, you lose this, accept the vote on with caveat that in fact we can review or the set date can be changed based on what the, what's going on with cor- coronavirus.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. And my, my request is for June twenty-first. And you, you know, if, if we get accepted for that, hold that date and prior to date, review it, I'm a hundred percent on because, um, it's all, you know, we all have to know. So I'm in.
Gordon?
I, I'm fine with it, but I just question if we set the review date for June eighth, is it gonna give you a realistic expectation on the event?
Well, we can review it earlier.
Yeah, we can watch it. If the numbers seem to stay level, I'll probably be calling you myself anyhow, you know, if there's nothing moving due to the government or.
Charlie, when's our next meeting?
So.
In May, first meeting in May.
The May eleventh, sorry, May twelfth and May twenty-sixth would be your other meetings in May.
Well, in order to try to give a thirty day notice, if we had to, we tried to discuss it on May twenty-sixth.
All right, that's right there on the line. And if there's any leniency through the board of health, through the, um, pre-registration of my vendors, that, that would help.
Wow, that's really cutting. I mean, it's already mid-April and we haven't even peaked yet.
I know.
It's, it's dicey.
We were supposed to be in the peak, but we're not.
Yeah, well, they keep pushing it out.
Correct, yes. Um, any date prior, I'm willing, um, unfortunately, I, I, I don't follow, I'm not very hip and cool. I'm actually considered an essential, so I still try to go to work every day due to this new garage I opened up. So I don't pay attention to much.
All right, Ford, you ready to vote on this?
Sure.
They have a motion?
I, I move we approve the date as requested with the caveat that we will review, did we pick the twenty-sixth of May? Is that what we picked?
Either way, either date is good, either early May or later.
Better to wait a little longer. I think May twenty-sixth is too early personally, but.
So June eighth you're thinking?
June fifteenth? Is that what we said? No, that's what he wants it, right? So June twenty-first, Father's Day, June twenty-first is when he wants the event. So June fifteenth? Well. Yeah, it'd be the Monday, fifteenth would be the Monday before the twenty-first, the sixteenth, which isn't a normal meeting night, but there's nothing preventing you from meeting just on this subject, is on the Tuesday before the twenty-first. Can you live with that, Bob?
I'm, I'm with you guys, whatever you tell me to do, I'm doing so.
Well, you're not gonna box you in so that you can't call off your vendors and you end up getting, you know, losing deposits or what have you. I don't know what your arrangements are, but, and I, I'm not asking for what they are, but as long as it doesn't, you thought it out, that's all.
I'm feeling that everybody would probably be aware of the situation anyhow going forward and they'd probably expect, you know, to be notified and, you know, probably aware of it. I don't think, I don't think it's gonna affect anybody's decisions going forward.
I, I just.
Is there a second to Tom's motion?
I, I'll second the motion, I'm just concerned like Tom is over whether or not it's gonna happen.
Yeah, well, we, we've canceled fireworks, we've canceled the other things. If we have to cancel Mud Act, as much as I'd hate to have to just cancel anything, but at least we got the opportunity to do it. It's not open, always open ended.
So what day?
Which, which, um?
On what day?
Twenty-first.
Twenty-first.
Is the day of the event.
Right, but you guys wanted to review it, uh?
June sixteenth was the Tuesday before June twenty-first.
Okay, okay.
So the board could hold a five or ten minute meeting if necessary, even though it's an off night.
Okay, June sixteenth.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Good luck.
Thank you. What, what time, um, June sixteenth, guys?
Well, traditionally, they're at seven-thirty. I mean, when we get closer, the board can confirm the time, Bob. I mean, it'd usually be seven-thirty, but, you know, sometimes if it's five or ten minutes, the board's done it at seven. Heck, given our schedules right now, the board could have during the day. Yeah, right, exactly. That's what I was thinking.
Pam, Pam, keep me in the loop, okay?
I will, okay, yep.
All right, thank you guys.
Stay safe.
Love ya. Have a great night, all of ya. Bye-bye.
Charlie?
Yep, taking Bob.
On you?
Yep, there we go, okay. Um, going back to the, my notes here, um, vacation carryover, um, some of my colleagues had been discussing whether there was gonna be a need and I don't mean more need in our other communities, um, because obviously with COVID, people's vacation plans and everything have changed and people may not be using vacation. I review, Sandy Nolan provided me with the data and I've passed along to you about where things stand for our employees, you know, public works, public safety and wage and personnel. And I believe the fire chief has said, and I believe the police chief also has said, we haven't had an increase in calls due dear, due to COVID. And in fact, you know, um, the only questionable ones in a sense of the amount of time people might lose of vacation is more the chiefs themselves and the two administrative assistants in those departments. So looking at the data that Sandy had provided, I didn't see any reason to do a general across the board, let's allow additional vacation time to be carried over than what's allowed under the contracts or under the wage and personnel bylaw. I did send a note out to the chiefs about this, um, pointing out that they should work with their employees and also with the administrative assistants to make sure that people did take vacation during the next eleven weeks to, um, so they weren't going to be in a position of use it or lose it. The, there's a couple of department heads, um, there's one department head, wage and personnel employee who has a significant amount of time, um, who's not, you know, public safety or public health. That person has about, I think, a hundred and forty hours. And I would certainly send a note to that person to remind her that, um, you know, there's only a certain amount of time left to take the vacation. Kathy Drynan, on the other hand, is obviously our board of health agent, she's right in the forefront of dealing with the pandemic in terms of Halifax and working with the fire chief and police chief on these matters. She's actually sent a note to the board asking about the possibility of carrying over more vacation than is normally allotted, and I would support that request. I think it's crucial during the next couple of months that if, um, we'd rather have Kathy working than on vacation. I think in a sense, it might even be. Um, I think in a sense, it might even be stressful for her to take vacation because she'd be worried about what was going on at the same time she was trying to take vacation, I'd rather not introduce that into her life. Um, so my recommendation, whether it was going to be through the board select or through wage and personnel, was to allow a waiver. In under the wage and personnel bylaw to allow her to take more vacation than is allowed, it's forty hours is the maximum under the bylaw. Um, and then the other problem, Charlie, is me, um, I'm sort of in the same situation. In that uh I have a number of weeks of vacation still to take, normally I would have taken one in May and another in June. I'm not sure if that's how feasible that's gonna be, I'm certainly gonna try and take some vacation at some point during the next two and a half months, um, not just to use it, but. I think all of us are gonna need to um take a break at some point simply because it's gonna be a long haul out of this. Uh, and my hope is that Kathy's gonna take some time off too, um, but at least with, in my situation, the board can vary the contract with me. To um make a change to allow in this circumstance that additional vacation be ta- um be allowed to be carried over from fiscal twenty to fiscal twenty one. I didn't know what the board's thoughts were in general about the carryover vacation leave, but also um for any particular people.
Well, well, we normally we normally get requests to to carry over from the different departments, yeah, so we we'll get a heads up on it. I think we ought to play it by case by case, except for you and Kathy.
Right, in fact, you got a list from the highway part, we'll get to that in uh later on, that's part of their union contract where I think most of the employees there are asking to carry over the forty hours they're allowed to carry over. Um, so we'll deal with that a little bit later um tonight, so that's an example of what you've just mentioned, Charlie.
Okay, Ford?
What what's the number you we should set for you and Kathy, a hundred and twenty hours, three weeks to carry over?
Yeah, I know, I'll talk to Kathy, um, I think we're both between a hundred and thirty, a hundred and forty right now. Um, a week would bring us down below the hundred and twenty, but let me talk to Kathy, but yeah, um. Uh, I think a hundred and twenty would be helpful with the, you know, with the encouragement to both of us that we'd at least try and take some of that vacation.
Good.
Tom? I'm sorry, Gordon, I didn't mean to cut you off.
Uh, his Tom's mic's off.
Tom's mute, Tom's muted.
He took himself out, he did that himself.
Okay. Well, Gordon, what you're feeling on it?
I just, i- is a hundred and twenty enough for both of you to carry over because it would still mean you have to take it, Charlie?
Yeah, I mean, look, I'm gonna take a couple of days off, give me a nice enough day, I'll sit on the porch.
I'd rather have you working, Charlie.
Yeah.
You can take a couple hours on the porch out back and overlooking the parking lot, it's a great view.
Well, I think the ni- nicer ones on the porter go, you know, go up to the second floor.
It's not safe.
Nope.
Okay, then I'll go.
Top of the water tower.
I'll bring an outdoor on dock chair and sit on the uh the bottom porch then.
No, it's gonna be a rocker if you do that.
Okay.
So, is there a motion?
I would want at least a hundred and twenty for now.
Yeah, we can always revisit it if it becomes that problematic, I'll I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Tom, you seconded it?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, um, next thing, just on the budget status, the finance committee did not meet last night, they are gonna meet next week, um, because of the power outage, we didn't get a quorum. Um, you know, they're gonna have at least a little more time to look at the work that Sandy Nolan, the town accountant, put together both on the revenue side and. A possible expense budget that might fit within there, um, I gave them in essence a narrative of what we were looking at in terms of. Um, what needs to be looked at first in terms of priorities about fitting the fiscal twenty budget in and then. Starting to add to there with our legal requirements such as retirement, pension assessment, health insurance and such. Um, so they've got their work cut up for them, but at least they have a good base from Sandy to work with and a framework for me. To start the conversation, so they'll, there, I believe they're planning on meeting Monday on Patriot's Day despite the holiday, that's their traditional night. Um, and I'm waiting to get a confirmation, I'll make sure the boards are aware of when they're meeting. Um, on the town meeting status, we're still scheduled for June fifteenth, the state did approve a framework to allow setting up a one-twelfth budget if we don't have town meeting in June. That um one-twelfth budget would be approved by the board selectmen and submitted to the Division of Local Services. DLS is working on the procedure for that, and a one-twelfth budget doesn't mean necessarily one-twelfth for each line item, so. Um, DLS is very well aware, for instance, that our retirement assessment is going to be up for the entire per uh hundred percent is up in July. Similarly, we'd have to pay money to Silver Lake, uh, group our casualty and property insurance and such. So if it came down with no town meeting, my intention would be for the board to be working with the finance committee. And our department heads to put together a budget to on the for the first month and then possibly subsequent months. To the Division of Local Services that would stay within our projected revenues, because I'm sure the Division of Local Services is gonna be looking at that. Um, in making any final approvals on an individual community basis. Uh, and your town election status, that's still scheduled for June twentieth, um, I had written our legislators to, you know. Give them a heads up that, hey, you know, this was a couple of weeks ago, that we may not be able to even have the town election, given the governor's restrictions on gatherings and such. And concerning the age of our election workers, the um, but I, you know, it's still two months out. I would hope that if it gets closer to June and then most a lot of communities have moved their municipal elections to June with the hope that we may be able to hold them. That the state government will give consideration to doing a mail-in ballot, um, right now, people can vote, early voting is allowed. And we can get that set up and mail-in voting is allowed, um, along with absentee ballots, so there's a number of ways people can cast ballots before the town election date. The idea would be that anybody who wanted a ballot would be able to get one and be a little bit work for the town clerk's office. Um, but um it may be better than trying to have everybody show up on election day on June twentieth at the elementary school and. Dealing with social distancing and such, we'll see how that plays out. Um, on uh legal matters, uh, the uh first case, very interest versus Halifax, the lawsuit, the court gave party trust extension until May fifteenth. Um. That um state approved the, sorry, um, the date's gonna be depend on whether, sorry, I'm switching notes here. The court gave party trust an extension time until May fifteenth in regards to the building permits in this case. Um, that's all that's happening right now on the actual lawsuit, I'll bring what's happening with Amanda Estates itself admitted. On the second lawsuit, there's no update or actions, on also, there were other actions during the last few weeks, uh, according to the Andrews had filed a request. With a building inspector that revoked the building permits for Amanda's Estates that he had issued during the last few weeks, and that request is under review. Um, in addition, Mr. Andrews had filed an appeal with the ZBA of the issuing of a building permit. Um, I think that appeal's gonna be heard at the ZBA's meeting in June, um, the filings are not attached, given the number of pages. Um, on Amanda's Estates itself, um, per the direction of the court. That certain issues be remanded to the ZBA, the ZBA will hold a hearing on the remand during its meeting on May fourth. Um, and I can get the uh notice to the board later this week, so that's where things stand on that. Um, I I think I, I don't know if I talked to the board specifically at a previous meeting um or individually, but. I am discussing with the financial team in the regulatory department about making moves to systems that use less paper. The payroll and accounting and permitting and document retrieval, in essence, what we do at town hall a lot is transactional. And that, you know, people bring stuff in or we send stuff out or people want to look at stuff, um, the idea is that. The pandemic gives us a reason to try and go more electronic for all our transactions and for record keeping. So our staff, you know, in those departments is contacting their colleagues to find out what systems they're using. I may or may not want to have articles at town meeting depending on how far we get down this road during the next month. Um, in order to appropriate money to have new systems in place, but um it's because of the. The pandemic, you know, we may be going back and forth, um, in the sense of the amount of we we can open town hall or not open town hall, open up other facilities and such. That it would be prudent for us to plan ahead for the long term, both for this pandemic, but also in general. Um, to go more electronic and that that's the impetus for that.
Charlie?
Well, I I'm I'm from the old school, I like hard copies.
Do does the current system that we have in place have a payroll system that we can integrate with?
That is what um Sandy is checking with the, they would be able to, they, what we've been told by Linda Cole is that. The actual payroll folks can work with various electronic systems, they've done that with other communities. So, um, it's more on us to what data we're bringing to them and how we're bringing it to them than, um, so we don't have to lose them. But they don't have a particular system in place that they would bring to us in essence.
Okay. Um. Fire suppression?
Fire suppression system, just to update the board, the town's current bond anticipation note for the elementary schools' fire suppression systems due to be paid in May twenty one. Normally, the town would issue a twenty year bond at this time, however, the town's financial advisors have recommended that the town issue another ban until. Late this year as the municipal bond market's uncertain due to the pandemic. The goal would be to issue a new ban which would allow the town to look at the market later this year and then either continue to issue further bans or a twenty year bond. Um, in either case, the town would make a down payment on the principal during fiscal year twenty twenty one. I believe the ban is actually gonna go out to bid tomorrow, in fact, so we should get results later this week. Um, and then be able to appropriate the necessary money through whatever town meeting process we end up with. Um, but I wanted to bring the board up today as to what's going on with that. Um, mobile units is affordable housing, Attorney Mail's developing special legislation for that, um, he's aware of the board's interest in the matter and. Um, he'll be getting back to the board, I hope, in the next few weeks. The Reebok Ragnar road race, or not road race, but relay race, I guess more, um, involving southeastern Massachusetts and the Cape. That events, which were scheduled to go through Halifax and not use and use the elementary school as a transfer point on Friday, May eighth, has been canceled, um, there's a document that I gave you. I don't know if they're gonna try and reschedule for next year, but at least for the spring, um, that's off the boards. On a blood drive, um, I did contact the Mass Red Cross about their schedule and what would be needed to hold a blood drive in Halifax at the request of a resident in Halifax. Red Cross staff said that their dates are booked until late June at the very least, the venue would have to be at least twelve hundred to fifteen hundred square feet in size and air conditioned, at least during the summer months. Um, as far as I know, the only suitable space in the municipal building would be the great hall, if the board wants, if the board wants, I'll bring this up later this spring. I provide this information to the resident, I sent him a letter just detailing um what I found out from the Red Cross and that copy of the letters in your folder. Um, you know, I'm happy to wait until, you know, later this spring if the board has any interest in trying to do something like that or the board, you know. I don't know what the board would would like to do in the sense of, obviously, there's some logistical challenges in having the great hall, especially if we've kept the building closed, I know that the Red Cross. Has been, you know, has protocols in place to maintain the safety of their staff and the ten and participants, and I guess, you know, anybody else who's in the building. Um, but um I think, you know, um, I don't know what the board's interested or whether they just would like to wait and. If the need becomes greater, since the Red Cross, you know, by contacting the Red Cross, let's say, in late June, they say, yeah, all our dates are open up, we need, you know, we need more. Uh, venues to hold them, I can do it that way too.
I'm inclined to go along with that, Charlie, and, you know, just wait and see how this all kind of develops and talk about it later. Rather.
Well, it. They don't have an opening until June, we might as well wait until we've got time to consider it.
Right.
The other, the other building now would be the um cafeteria at the elementary school with the new unit that went in that was supposed to add air conditioning into that room.
Huh, I didn't know they had AC there, okay.
That that was the part of the upgrade this summer.
Right, okay. Was this past summer or this coming summer?
This past summer, it was all supposed to be.
Okay, I'll make a note of it. Uh, multi-family zoning bylaw, sorry, go ahead.
It's on one floor, so that that takes out using the the elevator to bring.
Right.
Real upstairs.
Yeah. Um, multi-family zoning bylaw, Attorney Questle had provided a new draft of the proposed bylaw, I corrected a couple of typos. Um, Alan Diaz recommended that Title V be changed, the appropriate CMR citation, because the state in its infinite wisdom might change Title V to. Something else, whereas the CMR tends to be more stable as to the location of the regulations in this case. Uh, so I've made that change, I've made no other changes, I understand that there might be interest in further discussions about the subject, but I'd recommend that board selectmen submit the draft. With the changes noted above to the planning board for the planning board's hearing on May seventh, I think there's general consensus. Okay, sorry.
Ford, do you have something to say?
Uh, none of that, no.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 There were a couple of other um articles that were in the proposed warrant for town meeting, um, and. One which I went back and looked at, which even though I wrote about it, I can't find the citation for it, so I don't, there's no reason to bring it, but. We had, as we just had the multi-family housing, there was a floodplain update that we needed to do based on updates in the map dates and ID numbers and such. Also, the uh federal government through FEMA wants us to put a purpose into the floodplain section of the bylaw. Um, and so what I will revisit the floodplain bylaw in a few minutes about um their deadline date. But I was trying to avoid, obviously, the town being in violation of that, so um to, there was gonna be something brought to the planning board on that basis. Um, and then there's the recreational marijuana, where we have a petition article. Um, for allowing recreation marijuana establishments in the commercial district via a special permit. I'm not going to want to bring anything under where I mentioned the uh chapter forty A, section six. I know there's, it's come up before, but I don't have any wording for this, and so there's nothing to bring to the planning board, but for the other two topics, the floodplain. And the recreational marijuana, those should be submitted to the planning board as part of its public hearing on May seventh.
Do you need a motion?
Yes, please.
I would make that motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Um, Country Club Estates, the hearing's scheduled for May sixth, however, if the governor's orders on gatherings have not been relaxed, the hearing will be continued. Without a penalty on the clock until Wednesday in the first half of June, ZBA may be able to handle some administrative actions at the meeting in May. Um, just that's the update there. Um, on the Burt Gainer legislation, while chapter fifty-three of the Acts of twenty twenty allowed the board of selectmen to appoint Mr. Gainer as a special police officer. Chapter fifty-three is tied specifically to the pandemic, to make the appointment allowable for a longer period of time, the special legislation still needs to be approved. And Representative Lenatra wrote to me a couple of days ago that the bill, Senate twenty-three ninety-three, has been engrossed and passed for the third week reading and should be on the governor's desk soon. I'll continue following up with both Representative Lenatra and Senator Brady on that. Um, due date for property tax bills and waivers on late payments, just to review, the board last week voted. To approve the do move the due date for the second half property tax bills from May first to June first, remove the deadline for filing exemptions from April first to June first. And to waive the penalties and interest on late payments for bills with due dates from March tenth to June twenty ninth, as long as the bills were paid between March tenth and June twenty ninth. Division of Local Services did confirm today that the waiver period does end on June twenty ninth, not June thirtieth. And that calculation of interest will be based on the due date of the bill, so that interest on property tax bills paid after June twenty ninth will be based on the June first due date, for instance. Obviously, for the other bills, whether they're motor vehicle or they are water bills, for instance, they'll be based on the due dates for those bills. I was notified about a potential trash problem at thirty-seven through thirty-nine Buttonwood Road, someone called the selectmen's office about it, um, I did do a drive-by and. I did do a drive-by and there are some piles of trash and debris at both addresses. I'm going to send a non-certified letter to the property owners just to notifying them of the problem and I'll check back with the properties again before the board's meeting on the 28th. We did get a request from the VFW to place flags on the town hall green from May 16th to June 6th as the sort of observe Memorial Day and as the town may not have a Memorial Day observance, again, it depends on how relaxed the gathering rules have gotten at that point. Then I made a copy of the letter for the board so that you have it in your packets. I didn't know what the board would like to do.
Happy to move that.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We did get ambulance abatement for March 2020 from the treasure collector's office to bait $79,463.09.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Charlie, on that note?
Yeah.
How, how are we doing for ambulance revenue to hit the projections?
Oh, we easily are meeting, well, for the projections for fiscal 20, we're easily beating those.
Okay.
Yeah. Flammable storage permits, the due date for payments is May 1st as the board wished to waive late fees for any period of time up until June 30th. I think we are, the actual permit, I believe, is $50 and then what the bylaw says is that the late fee is $50 each month thereafter. I think we've only got at this point like four or five flammable storage permits. I didn't know if the board wanted, just as we, the board had waived penalties and interest on the property tax bills and such, whether the board wanted to waive the late fees for a couple of, would be for two months on the flammable storage permits.
All in favor?
I'll make the motion to waive.
Second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Your Children's Mental Health Week, we had a request from the Parent Professional Advocacy League for the board to proclaim May 3rd through May 9th, it's Children's Mental Health Week. The board does not traditionally proclaim weeks, et cetera. I can't remember the last time the board did so, but I felt obligated to bring the request to the board since obviously it was sent to the board. So I don't, I made a copy of the letter and also the proposed proclamation. I didn't know what the board would like to do.
You're right, we haven't, we haven't participated in any of those. I guess the question is, how does it benefit the town and does it do any harm?
I don't think it does anything one way or the other. I, or, you know, I didn't check the organization out. I don't know if they're for-profit or nonprofit or what, you know, what the basis is. I don't remember them coming to the board before requesting a proclamation. I can see, you know, the, the week is in May, so if the board, if the board wants me to go do some more research, I can bring it back to the board on the 28th.
Yeah, I would appreciate that.
If you have time, Charlie, yeah, that would, that would be preferable.
Okay.
Yeah, during your vacation time, Charlie, you can check on that.
Why are you sitting in the rocking chair out front?
Right. Are, are beverages allowed if I'm out there on the rocker?
Only decaf.
Can I make, I make a motion to add an article or to remove an article from the town meeting bylaws?
Um.
You can sit out there.
Okay. Gasoline and diesel fuel contract recommendation by the highway surveyor to extend the contract with Dennis K. Burke for another year?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Charlie, can I ask a question?
Yeah.
Did anything ever come of the former, the investigation into the former provider?
Well, no, this was for, the other contract was for heating oil. That was a problem contract.
Okay, I thought it was for everything.
And, yeah, um, so, well, I, yeah, the Scott, you know, Scott did the testing when we found, in fact, that we're problems with the, what was in there. I don't think anything's been settled in terms of, I know the insurance company's been in contact with Scott about damages and that Scott's been also in contact with Larry Mayo about that, but I don't think anything, I don't think anything's been filed. I can follow up with all three because I don't know exactly what, if there were specific repairs to the systems that were needed that cost, you know, cost a material amount of money. But we did switch vendors. Scott has asked me to go out to bid, which I haven't had time to do for the heating oil contract and now we're getting almost out of season, one hopes, or close to it. And, but nevertheless, I'll get it, I'll put something together to, you know, for now and into the next heating season.
You've got enough stuff on your plate. I wasn't looking to overburden you. I was just curious if you had any offhand knowledge.
Well, yeah, yeah, it's, it's in my queue. I'll, I'll, I'll get to it when I can get to that.
Bless your queue.
Um, so FML leave for Janet Orbatty, if the board would approve that?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And similarly for Keith Swanson, though I believe Keith has returned to work, but his leave would be construed as FML leave.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The police chief has asked for the, for Noreen Callahan to be reappointed for a term expiring on May 1st, 2021.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Also, just to note, the chief did a request for reappointments, for instance, for special police officers and matrons and such. Those are going to be done in June when the board does its normal, you know, July 1st to June 30th appointments. Noreen's appointment, I think under state law, is a May 1st appointment, so that's why we're doing this now. And the other ones, Pam has those and we'll put them in the appropriate place so that they will be brought to the board probably at the first meeting in June. We did get notification from the Mass Association of Health Boards of a grant award to our Health Act Board of Health for $5,000 to deal with COVID. The board selectmen needs to affirm the signature by the chair on the grant form.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I'll be in tomorrow, sign it, Charlie.
Okay, well, you already signed it.
You already signed it.
Oh, was that the one I signed?
Well, one of many. Yeah, I know. Um, let's see, the automated speed camera legislation, I'm making note of this because when we were talking about Walnut Street and the problems with the truck traffic there, I'd seen that there was legislation at one point, it wasn't going to fit for Halifax. They were only going to allow it in communities of 15,000 or more. And then I saw the latest draft, which would Halifax could fit it in. I, what I read unfortunately is that it's still going to be under further study by the legislature. I think there's an, there's an interest in doing something along those lines. This was even pre-COVID, so, but I don't think, obviously, anything's going to happen with this legislative session, but I'm going to send a note to Representative Lenatra and Senator Brady saying that, you know, we have interest in this. It depends, obviously, on how they draw up the frameworks for allowing and what the regulations are and everything like that. But Walnut Street would be a sort of perfect fit for that where we, you know, we obviously know that we have a problem, the chief agrees is a problem, but our resources are limited and that we may, you know, need to have more of a constant presence, even although one might, you know, it might be something that could be portable and moved to other locations that present problems. But nothing's being done right now with that. It's simply something the legislature's looking at, but I thought it could be a good fit for us. Possible illegal business at One Spring Street, just the board, for FYI, the board, the bill inspector had CC'd the board on a letter containing a possible illegal business at that location. There's no action needed by the board, just that Rob wants to make sure the board's in the loop about it. Speaking of vacation carryovers, the highway surveyor did submit requests by members of the department to carry over 40 hours of vacation leave, fiscal 20 to fiscal 21. The board's approval is also needed and there's a document in your folder showing the employees and that they do want to carry over 40 hours.
So moved.
Second.
Charlie?
Any comment?
Do we have to do special, something special for one of those?
Not at this point, no. I mean, one person obviously has a very large mouth, but, you know, neither he nor anyone else has come to the highway surveyor as far as I know to say, look, you know, I was out on sick, you know, sick leave or other leave and I couldn't take my vacation leave, you know, what can you do?
Okay.
So.
Because that's like a, a month.
Yeah, close to it, yeah, three and a half weeks.
At least. That's all in favor?
Aye.
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 Solar fields and special legislation, Attorney Mayo has drafted special legislation to be submitted to the town meeting and then to the state legislature to allow the town to issue property tax bills for solar fields, developers who'd still have the option for pilots. Two of the members of the Board of Assessors, Tom, that's not you, which is the other two, have expressed support for the draft. I recommend the board approve the draft and submit it to the town meeting. It's unlikely the legislature's going to approve this measure, but it provided additional evidence to the legislature that statewide legislations needed on this subject.
Yes, this definitely has to move forward and there's going to be a lot of issues with it and depending on how many communities go along with it, but I would move this.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And we've already dealt with the PEC earth removal application. We've dealt with Bob Bergstrom. Floodplain mapping, I said it was going to return that subject. I've been in correspondence with FEMA. They're well aware, of course, that not just Massachusetts, but nationwide, that cities and towns that have deadlines to update the, their bylaws may not be able to do that by the deadline date of July 22nd in our case. It does require, and what I want to do is obviously if we have town meeting before, then it'll be on the war and my hope is the town would vote for it. But in case we don't have town meeting, I'm going to ask for the documents I need to send to FEMA requesting the waiver of the date. It's what's called a rescission of the letter of final determination. Since FEMA says, you know, this is now the floodplain maps and such, you would need to incorporate those into your bylaw and we say, well, we're sorry, but legally, we can't change the zoning bylaw without a vote at town meeting. We won't be able to have a vote at town meeting until after July 22nd. And so what they give, basically, they sort of lift the letter of final determination until we, at the appropriate deadline, until we can get the town meeting to approve it. So if I would have the board authorize me to send that correspondence to FEMA.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And then on pavement management services, Steve Hayward had provided me with a scope of work from better engineering for analyzing the town's roads and pavement conditions. The cost is $28,500 and I have to assume he's getting it from Chapter 90 funding. I don't think there's any sum of that magnitude in his regular highway budget to pay for it. I did tell him, you know, I looked at it and the scope of work makes sense in the sense of be fairly complete, not just looking at the condition of the roads, but also then estimating what the cost would be for making the necessary improvements. But I do need to draw up a generic contract for the board to sign later this week using the scope of work for this, as the specifications for the contract. So I would ask if the board would approve the generic contract, you know, the board's approved all the generic contracts would be the same wording, but just with these specifications attached to it and then the board could sign it later this week, we'll get the contractor to sign it and Steve can move along with that.
So moved.
So moved.
Second, if you need a second, we have two movers.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 While I did have executive sessions listed just in case, I don't really have anything to bring to the board on either of those matters, so unless the board feels necessity, then I haven't set up, I really haven't set the system up, Zoom, the Zoom system. It's, my colleagues, I actually were talking, again, you know, by email earlier today about, well, how are you setting up executive sessions? And there's one of two ways. You set up two meetings, one ends up being the executive session that you don't invite anybody else to. But I don't, it didn't do that in this case, but I also don't see the necessity of doing it. So unless the board feels otherwise, I don't see the need for the executive sessions.
I, I don't see it either, Charlie, and I would have a long drive home, so I.
I know.
From the couch to where?
No, I'm on the dining room table, actually.
Then he's going, he's going, yeah, well, he's going from the table to the couch.
Yeah, that's it.
For the, for the upcoming.
Charlie, I don't, I have nothing further. Gordon, do you have anything?
For the upcoming date, can we add the April 23rd at 6:30 PM for possible quorum of the selectmen?
Oh, okay, for the school committee thing.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, so what that's, Gordon, can you explain to the members of our studio audience?
So we're going to have a five school committee, so Halifax Elementary, Plimpton, Kingston, Union 31, and Silver Lake, just have a joint meeting. We have the bus contract to discuss and then we also need to talk about what's going to happen with the budgets going forward and how going to a 112 budget will affect everyone.
So that's going to be.
I'll make it ever to be there.
So which day of the week is that, Gordon?
It's a Thursday night.
Okay, so.
Is that the 23rd?
The 23rd.
That's going to be at Silver Lake?
I think it's going to be a Zoom meeting, Tom.
Oh, okay, all right.
And then you'll get to see 100 squares for all the school committee members that are, that are there.
That'll be fun.
I just think with, with what we're facing, I think having everybody at a single meeting is.
No, no, it'd be over 10 anyway, I, you know. It'll be kind of crazy, but okay, it'll be interesting.
There's a, there's a little feature on here to react, so some versions have a, have a hand up version, so that'll be the way to get the chair's attention.
Yeah, yes, I was looking at that, Gordon, and I was, I guess the hands up thing is for webinars, which are technically different than meetings. It depends on the subscription that you get.
Okay.
But, so you can, you know, a meeting could be a webinar, it can be set up that way, certainly, but it allows, as you pointed out, the hands up provision, so then people can be called on and the host can mute and unmute the mics as necessary.
The way we did it for Silver Lake is we physically put our hand up.
Oh, well, there's a, no, there's a 20th century way of doing it, yes.
Well, I've got my hand up right now, can you see it?
How many fingers?
Way to go, Troy.
Okay, so if the board would like to adjourn.
Hey, just one more thing, Troy, we can get you a Chromebook for that meeting.
Yeah, we can, we got an extra one in the other room. Yeah.
That's okay.
I knew he was going to say that.
But he doesn't have internet at home.
Yeah, but a Chromebook, you don't need internet, is that correct, you guys?
No, he needs internet.
We, we can get somebody's hotspot near his house.
I was just going to say, get him a hotspot, yeah.
Well, we'll, we'll bring him to town hall.
You know, the care, the caring and sympathy I hear over the fall, it makes me feel so good.
Oh, okay.
He can sit in the selectman's meeting room.
He can.
I moved and we adjourned.
Okay.
Second. I signed all the warrants earlier tonight, so.
Yep.
Tom, you're going to be by?
Yeah, I'll come by tomorrow morning.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll stop by also.
Save the overall environment for me, that's all.
Thank you all.
How do we get out of here?
Pam?
Yep.
Pam, be careful driving home now.
I will, yep, definitely. I think we all got to watch it.
Say goodnight, Pam.
Goodnight, everyone.
Goodnight, Charlie, save time home.
Yep.
I was waiting for him to say goodnight, Gracie.
I was riffing on that.